Let me call this meeting to order and establish we have a quorum. Basilio Villarreal, President Jay Peña.
President.
Eduardo Eric Ramírez, absent. Dr. Veronica Barrera.
Present.
Noi Castillo.
Present.
John A. Pope, the fourth.
Present.
Elíasar Velázquez.
Present.
Before we begin, let me take this opportunity, not really an opportunity, but let me take this time to basically mention some people who have been a part of the members of our RGCGISD family that have passed away, and can we have a moment of silence? Leo Leal, José Luis Guerra, Francisco Chito Gutiérrez, and Veronica Barrera Sánchez. These people have tragically passed away, and you can take a little moment of silence because they were part of our organization. At this time, let's go to the pledge of allegiance. Elíasar.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, let's have the invocation and presentation of colors. Invocation, Jay Peña.
Heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Help us to engage in meaningful discussion, allow us to grow closer as a group, and nurture the bonds of community. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. At this time, can we have a motion to approve special board meeting, November 17, 2023, public hearing, I'm sorry, December 5, 2023, regular board meeting, December 5 of the year 2023?
I so move.
Second.
Second.
Any more discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, same sign, motion carries. At this time, we're changing it up a little bit. We're going to leave public forum for later in the meeting. We're going to proceed, because we have a lot of teachers here, we're going to proceed to recognition of the teacher incentive allotment.
Good afternoon, everyone, members of the board, board president, Ms. Peña. I am very honored to be here again in front of you to share with you our teachers, to share with you that we got approved, we got validated for the teacher incentive allotment, and that has an impact on our teachers. So today, we are going to recognize them once again. We had a banquet for them already, but this is, now we're going to recognize them in a public forum. So at this time, I would like to ask everyone to stand and greet our teachers as they come So I am going to call them by name. The teacher incentive allotment is a performance pay program that the state has put forward to compensate teachers for their great work and dedication. So we have, we're going to start with our recognized teachers. We have Christina Bazán, María Betancourt, Jessica De La Cruz, Eliza Delgado, Adrián García, Gina García, María García, Angelica Garza, Janía Garza, Sandra Garza, Esmeralda Garza Villarreal, Lucía González, Stephanie González, Perla Ramírez, Samantha Reina, Reynaldo Ríos, Itzayana Vallejo, Jennifer Bella, and Nancy Villarreal. It is an honor to say that these teachers have received the designation of recognized. Therefore, the state will compensate them with a stipend for five years between $3,000 and $9,000. So congratulations. And at this time, I want to call those teachers that received the designation of exemplary. So we have Veronica Barrera, Victor Barrera, José Berlanga, Nicolas Castillo, Lorena Chapa, Rachel Cortés, Marisela Díaz, Guadalupe Flores, Magdalena García, Viola García, Betsy Garza, María Garza, Mónica Garza, Jovita González, Sarah González, Sarah González, Xenia González, Marva Guerra, Adelia Guerrero, José Guerrero, Olga López, Araceli Moreno García, Cristo Loyarbides, Beatriz Peña, Juan Quintero Molina, Joa Rodriguez, Elías Sainz, Adriana Salinas, Marilis Salinas, Ronald Sánchez, Alda Solís, Jessica Villarreal, and Alfredo Zarate. These teachers received the designation of exemplary, and therefore will be receiving a stipend between $6,000 and $18,000 from the state of Texas. Thank you. And at this time, I would like to call those teachers that received a master designation, and this is Juli Sa Barrera, Mireya Basaldúa, Francisco Contreras, Norma de la Cruz, Jesús García, Elvia Garza, Jaime Garza, Isela González, Brenda Gutiérrez, Diana López, María Rosado, Sarah Sainz, Liseth Venecia, and Alberta Zarate. These teachers received the designation of masters, and therefore will be receiving a stipend of $12,000 to $232,000 from the state of Texas for five years. Thank you. And if I, we're going to take a group picture in a minute. I do want to invite all of you to stay behind for refreshments. Once again, I want to congratulate these teachers for their hard work and dedication, and for the recognition that they received through the teacher incentive allotment from the state of Texas. So let's give them a last round of applause. And I just want to remind you that we do have refreshments, so please stay behind for refreshments.
On behalf of the board and the entire staff, congratulations to everybody and to all your principals, assistant principals, counselors, support staff, a fantastic job, and to the ROTC, a great job, keep it up, a great job, and let's have some refreshments. We're going to take about a 10-minute break, and we'll proceed forward. Thank you. We're going to proceed forward. We're going to go to section seven, item one, update on student and staff highlights.
Mr. Osuna, we have the staff highlights.
I guess it's playing already with no volume yet, but yes, this is, of course, for the month of March, actually February, the month of February. The Public Relations Department is always overjoyed to see all the wonderful things that are happening in our district, so this is some of the highlights from the month
Great. Our high school Battle for Books team attended the regional Battle of the Books competition. Students had the opportunity to meet the authors of some of their books. Great job, students. RGCGISD hosted an inspiring celebration at the multipurpose center for all our elementary students. The spotlight was on Quaver Ready, our exceptional pre-K5 curriculum that ensures students develop critical skills. Our Rio Grande City High School, Mariachi Cascabelle, and our Grúia High School, Mariachi Grúia de Plata, earned a Division One at the 2024 UIL State Solo and Assemble Contest held in Seguin High School Performing Arts Center. Sensational work, students. Our superintendent of schools, Mr. Adolfo Peña Jr., surprised our students and staff with a delicious treat and a Valentine's Day card on Valentine's Day. Thank you. The superintendent's Student Advisory Committee enjoyed a delightful lunch before convening at the multipurpose center for a meeting with our superintendent. Students engaged in a constructive dialogue responding to seven insightful questions posed by Mr. Peña, offering valuable feedback on the performance of our schools and district. Rio Grande City Grúia ISD hosted the 13th Annual Rey Ramírez Relays. A special thank you to all participants for your dedication and hard work evident in every stride on the field. RGCGISD celebrated and honored our exceptional teachers who have been designated to receive the Texas Education Agency's Teacher Incentive Allotment, TIA. Funded through HB3, these distinguished educators are designated to receive incentives-based pay for the next five years in recognition of their student growth, data, and teacher performance. This has been my single line from Alberto and Salia Barrera Elementary.
Well, we'll continue. Before I go to the consent agenda, I need a motion to remove item E of section nine. Can I have a motion to remove item E of section nine? Second.
Second.
Okay, any more discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, all opposed, same sign, motion carries. At this time, let's go to consent agenda. Consent agenda is item one, two, and three. Can I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Second.
Any more discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, all opposed, same sign. Like always, Ms. Robles, can you tell us who donated money so at least they can be
Good evening. Donations for this past month was, were from Una Vendición Home Health, Rio Motors, Texas Musical Festival, RGC High School Baseball Booster Club, Leonel Cantú, Joel's Insurance Service, Maggie's Express, Rodriguez Store Number One, Martín Carlos Tepeda, Next Motor Sales, José Cantú, Oneida Surita, Jessica Fuentes, Lorena Surita, Triple G Livestock Auction, Daisy Melton, Wild and Steel, Jaime González, Delia Solís, J&amp;B Pharmakare, the Insurance Office, River Winds, El Faro Health, López Fireworks, Jorge Y. González, Mike Pools, ENA Development, Falcon Septic Cleaning Circle Seven Express, Five Star Clark Construction, Ocho Azaro Sales, EF Trucking, Daniel Almaraz, Cindy Marroquín, Graciela Sainz, Aísa Bazán, Alma Perales, Joanna Velázquez, Katrina Martínez, María Flores, Lorena Flores, Leonel, Leonor Rodríguez, Dilia Garza, Mario Gómez, Jorge Guerra, Liliana Bazán, Mónica Olivares, Raúl C. Fuentes, Claudia Canales, Raquel Salinas, Nelda Solís, Abel Laurel, Richard Vanest, Esmeralda Lanís, Juanita Gómez, Guadalupe Flores, Laura Quiroz, Armando Sánchez, Perla Ramírez, Félix López, Mariana Treviño, Silvia García, José Navarro, Eligi Salinas, Ruby Ortiz, Analise Enojosa, Ariel Lozuna, Adel Favela, Eliana Navarro, Stacy López, Alex Bazán, Brenda Gutiérrez, Karina Barrios, Héctor Gutiérrez, Joel Lozuna, Claudia Canales, Armando Gutiérrez, Glenda Solís, Jessica De La Cruz, Sandor López, Emma Treviño, Dani Garza, Gloria González, Sebastián Dory, Gerardo Guerra, Juan García, Gabriela Jessica Pérez, Eliana López, Flor Sainz, Kennedy Salinas Love Farm, Arcell Vázquez, Texas Cafe, Daniel Martínez, Jessica Gutiérrez, Jorge Guerra, Vanessa Treviño, Jesse James Solís, Ello Zarate, María Flores, Juan and Mary Guerra, Jaime Nelda Solís, Bright Start Therapy, Pope and Peña, Little Gators Day Care, Albert Olivares, Cristina Montalvo, Melissa Peña, Óscar and Mariela González, Mónica Reyes, Darlece Púbeda, Victoria González, Nidia Hernández, Regina Enterprises, Rainy, LLC, Beta Sigma Phi, Rio Motors, GTO Construction, Maggie's Express, CNDS Tax Services, Mia Maneser, Diamin, Elíasar Olivares Jr., Juan de Dios García, José Meraz, Mine Guerra, the Pediatric Care Center, Rio Motors.
Ma'am, that's a lot of people, right?
Yes, sir.
Can you repeat them again, ma'am?
Oh, read you.
No, ma'am, that's a lot of people that donated. I want to thank, that's a lot, a lot of people. Thank you for all your donations. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir, thank you.
At this time, let's go to the action items. Can we approve item four, item five, table item six, table item seven, table item eight, table item nine, and approve item 10 and 11? Have a motion that way. So basically, to approve item four and five, 10 and 11, and table six, seven, eight, and nine.
So move.
Second.
A second.
Second by John Pope. Any discussion?
I'd have to abstain by from, are you number four, five, and I think you said nine?
Yeah. Okay, we're tabling that motion anyway.
Okay, then it's seven, four, and five.
Okay, okay. Let the record reflect that Mr. Noi is table, abstaining on those, on those one. Anyway, we had a motion, we had a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, same sign, motion carries. Next, can we have a motion to approve item 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, and 17 as presented in our board package?
I so move. I second with discussion.
Okay, there's a second? Okay, discussion. Go ahead, Mr. Pope.
What's the status on the progress, completions? I know that in one of the meetings we had, we weren't going to be doing pay applications until it was completed.
Okay, the one that we were not going to do with pay applications was going to be for the multipurpose center, and if we look at it, it is none of, it's a multipurpose center. If you look at it, item 12 is a barbary, cosmetology, cosmetology, welding, and the next one is welding, the next one is gurlock, and the last one is, the one we had said we're not going to pay any was for this building until they finish.
Okay, so then what is the progress on the completion?
Okay.
At least on the welding, I think the welding was an issue.
Mr. Carson?
If we were able to put a percentage.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the board. The progress on this building, Mr. Pope?
The welding building, the welding.
The welding. The welding has one item, a couple of items. One of the exhaust fans for one of the booths is not connected yet, and the other one is that the siding that came in for the building was put in place and found later not to be the correct one, and they should have probably kept the siding there until the new one came on, but they didn't. They took off the siding, and they're waiting for the proper siding to come in so they can finish the installation on the outside of the building.
So what's the percentage completion, sir? Percentage?
Well, for example, those two items, probably it's within, I don't know, $10,000, you know?
Yeah, but is it 80% complete, 90% complete, 70%?
I'm sorry, I have that here. Let me, let me check it for you just a minute, sir. Welding, 93% complete.
93%.
That's correct.
So maybe the best thing for us to do is don't bring any more pay applications for it until they finish it, correct?
Okay, the balance to finish, they still have $112,000 on the table.
Well, for us, basically, next time they come for a pay application, make sure they at least finish the welding. I know the cosmetology needs a little bit more, but anything about welding, unless they're finished, don't bring it to us. I think that would be a good thing. Correct, Mr. Pope?
I guess unless it's an emergency, and then they need to fund you.
Okay, sir.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? We have a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Thank you.
At this time, can I have a motion to approve item 18, 19, 20, and 21 as presented in our board package?
So move.
Second.
Second.
Any more discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, same sign, motion carries. Can I have a motion to approve item 22 and 23 with the addendum that was given to us a little while ago? That is in our board package.
So move.
Second.
This addendum?
Yeah.
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
Did we, I guess this one right here?
Yes.
Do we go off the bids on the, well, I know, I hate to be a stickler, but I know we said addendums work for emergency purposes, because it gives us an opportunity to review it. Is, I guess the sign works in emergency?
We need the items before major, so since we didn't have a meeting in March, and we don't know, you know, the next one, we brought this one. And yes, Chris, they did submit three quotes, Chris, to you for that one?
Yes, yes.
There's three quotes.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any more discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, same sign, motion carries. Let's go to item 24, consider, take possible action on RFP 24, 25, 24, 28, 24, 32, 24, 33, 24, the bid, 24, 34, RFP 24, 35, RFP 24, 36, RFQ 24, 38. And before we go, before I ask for a motion, just to make sure that we do our, on the bids, we do our, we are considering only the lowest bid, correct, Chris? On the bids.
Good evening. So the ones that we're going with are either those bid, or they're going to be just for awarded vendors, so we have different pools of vendors to choose from.
Okay, like, for example, let me give you bid 24, 32, bid 24, 33, bid 24, 34. Those were to the lowest bidder, correct?
I have them here. Give me a moment.
24, 32, 24, 33, and 24, 34.
We are doing awarded vendors for these. It's not in particular that they're the lowest, it's just that we have a pool of different vendors, approved vendors for the district, so that we can choose from and get quotes from.
And I may make sure that before we, by any part, we take at least three quotes to make sure we have the lowest price, correct?
Yes, and also, a lot of the vendors that you, we get, that you might not see here, they are part of co-ops, so since they are part of purchasing cooperations, that's why they do not submit local bids.
Let me ask about the RFQ 24, 38. Separate document, I don't see it.
On that one, we are going to take no action, because we will be bringing it later on.
So.
For the electricity, the RFQ 24, 38.
So RFQ 24, 38, no action on that one?
Yes, I believe that would be correct, Mr. Salsa.
No action on any other one?
We do have the safety fences for elementary and secondary campuses that are separate documents, so I don't know if, I presented it with the addendum behind, there's some quotes.
Which item is that?
You're talking about the.
It would be the CSP 24, 42. I gave you all an addendum with the requisition that we just approved a little while ago, and it has quotes behind.
Those are the quotes for the security fences.
Chris, are you talking about 24, 28, 24, 34, and 24, 42?
I'm talking about 24, 42.
24, 42.
Yes.
So I would move to amend the motion to.
Well, let, can I basically go one step further? I was talking to Chris, and he says, as long as we award him before August, maybe we could table item.
24, 38.
Where are we at, Chris?
24, 38, we will not be taking action at the moment. We do not have anything for that. So 24, 38, no action.
So what if the motion were to approve the, all RFPs, including the RFP and CFP, that's included in the revised and separate document with exception to 24, 38? Would that be a sufficient motion, Chris?
But there is also. But there is also the 24, 42, but that's not, that's not on here.
It's on a separate document.
It's a, 24, 42 would be item 44, correct? Or not?
Item 44?
Or where's that 20, where's that particular item you're talking about?
The 24, 42 should be within the packet, and I gave you all an addendum with the quotes, with two quotes.
It's right after this one.
But that one was already approved on the previous one?
No, it has not been approved. We just brought it to this board meeting. So we are presenting two quotes. The quote that came in at the lower price is the Guerrero Ballistics. There was two South Texas Landscapes, and Guerrero.
I see it now.
And it's the third time, Chris, that we bid it out?
At this moment, yes, it's the third time.
Was this with a grant for security or no?
Yes, ma'am. And we have deadlines by August to make sure that we already, make sure that we address all the areas that are required by TA. And this is the third time that we bid this one out, and we only got two bidders.
Let me ask you a question, Chris. So is this for fencing?
Yes.
Okay, let me ask you a real quick question. As long as we award before August, we're okay, correct?
That should be correct, based off of the information I have. But I would need to verify, of course, with Ms. González, but I believe that is a correct, what we have for community purposes.
Why don't we just stop a little bit, and take a breath on, on the fencing, a little bit?
But Ms. González back there noted that it was the award, right?
Yeah, it's part of a grant.
Yes, so it was awarded before August.
And my understanding is that it's got to be installed by August the first in order for TEA not to penalize the district. If we don't spend the monies before August the first, and we're not going to pay until it's completed, then we will, TEA gets that money back. Then we'll get penalized.
Because Chris says that as long as it's awarded. Do we have to have it installed, or is it awarded? Which is it, Chris? Or awarded? Awarded. So as long as we award it before August, correct, we're good? So if we award it next month, we're good to go, right? So why don't we just take another look at this fencing? Because I, I'd rather...
Are these the two bidders, the two estimates? They're two different people?
Yes, they're two different companies. There was other vendors that were interested, and last minute, or at the end of the day, they just did not. We have it on our own wave, they go on, they're able to view everything, but we had others that viewed, but they just did not submit. We'd only had those two that submitted.
Well, maybe we put it out, we get more vendors, and maybe we'll get a better price. And if we, if you say we don't have to award till, if we award before August, we're good to go, right, Gina?
As long as we decide on one company?
Right. So can we just table the, the, the ones you're talking about for the next meeting? And I guess, basically, table and use the same delivery method as you, as we had for these?
And that, that is a competitive seal proposal. That is what we are using.
Can we, then can we just approve the ones we talked about, exception RFQ 24, 38? Which is the electricity? And, and table these ones that are, what are the numbers?
If, if we would not be...
24, 42?
Yeah, if we would not be going with it, if I'm not mistaken, it would be to take no action?
Using the same delivery method and tabling them, and, and we have to have a special meeting we have, but according to Gina, August, well, we're, we're just in April, so we got May, June, and July, correct? Okay. Can we have a motion?
So we bid it again? Is that, that, we bid it again, sir?
Yes.
So the motion is to approve?
The, what initially we had talked about.
Within revised agenda item number 24, with exception to 24, 38, and 24, 42.
Exactly.
Which are tabled for later time.
And, and the motions should say also that they use the same delivery method in 24, 42.
And subject to using that same delivery method, 24, that's, that's the motion.
Okay, second.
Second.
Any more discussion? If not, all those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, same sign. Motion carries. At this time, can we have approval of item 25, 26, 27, 28, and 29 as presented in our board packet?
So move.
Second.
Second.
Any more discussion? If not, all those in favor, signal by saying aye. Aye, all opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Can we have a motion to approve item 30, 31, 32, 33, 34, 35, and 36 as presented in our board packet?
So move.
Okay, second. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor, signal by saying aye. Aye, all opposed, same sign. Motion carries. This time, can we have a motion to approve item 37, 38, 39, 40, and 41 as presented in our board packet? Have we gotten the agreement already from La Union Water Supply, sir?
We, La Union Water Supply just switched attorneys, and they did set a proposed agreement just today. So we're just revising it, but we'll talk a little bit more under pending litigation in executive session.
So I motion, I motion to approve up to, up to 40, and I would also motion to move item 41 to executive session.
Okay. There's a motion to approve item 37, 38, 39, and 40, and moving 41 to executive session. Do I have a second? Second, any more discussion? If not, all those in favor, signal by saying aye. Aye, all opposed, same sign. Motion carries. At this time, can I have a motion to approve item 42 and 43 as presented in our board packet?
So move.
Second. Any more discussion?
I'll be abstaining from item 42.
Okay, let the record show that I know he's abstaining from item, item 42. Do we have a second? I think we did, right? Okay.
That's an oral presentation on 42?
How was it again?
It says oral presentation for item 42.
Yeah, we're, we're going to go there. Okay. Any, on, on item 42? We're going to have an...
It'll be somebody from MTC.
No, this is not from MTC. Mr. Peña? Can you tell us on item 42?
CDL.
Okay, this is a, CDL is a transportation license that is being provided to our residents, and they would like to lease the Ed Payne parking lot, our, what we own, on a monthly basis. So the community will benefit from it. We're not utilizing it at this time. $1,500 a month.
But we're not, it's month to month?
Month to month, yes, sir. The contract will be month to month, you know, until we would like to lease it out.
And they have insurance.
And they do have insurance. It's been reviewed by council already. So it would benefit, of course, our community.
But just make sure it's month to month.
Yes.
We're not obligated.
They're also going to give us two senior scholarships, one for both high schools, as, you know, trying to provide scholarships for our students.
Okay. Any more discussion? If not, all those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Now we're going back to the public forum. At this time, we have a public forum. We're going to start off with Mr. Ediel Barrera.
Sir, we have 44, 45, and 46?
Oh, excuse me, second, 44 through 46.
A motion to approve items 44 through 46 as presented in the board packet, if I may.
Okay, there's a motion to approve item 44 through 46 as presented in our board packet. We have a second.
And to, to include the addendum.
To include the addendum.
For each item.
I have a second. Okay, second. Can I ask, Chris, what is this about? Can I ask real quickly? Now we're going back to fencing. What is this? Is this just a delivery method, or what is it?
These are just delivery methods, so we can go out and bid, bid these projects. These are for, let's say, like, the old high school, which is now the RMS Complex, Rio High School. You know, we have gaps.
Okay, but this is just a delivery method?
Just delivery method for both of them.
Not a problem. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Nothing else, right, Mr. Peña?
No, sir.
Okay, let's go to the public forum. We have Mr. Ediel Barrera. So Barrera, you have three minutes. The timekeeper is Baltasar Salazar, and you ready to go?
Good afternoon, everyone. Well, the item that I was going to talk about was removed initially by you, so I have nothing to talk about.
Okay, thank you very much. At this time, let's go to, let's go to the second one. We have Maria Estrada. You have three minutes, ma'am. And Mr. Baltasar Salazar is your timekeeper. Whenever he says, "Time's up," time's up.
Hello, my name is Maria Estrada. I am the mother of a sixth grader and a kindergartner. I would really appreciate if I could not get interrupted, because I know we only have three minutes to speak. There has been times my sixth grader texts me that he is scared because of the fact people are getting knocked out in school and not being able to get up, back up, bleeding also, having cops pull up to take kids to juvenile. There was a two-week period where my kid was, where my son, two-week period where kids were fighting every day. How is that going on every day? And why is none of it getting stopped before it gets out of hand? Where are, where is all the protection for our kids? Babes in schools, kids smoking in schools? What's getting done about this besides sending kids to alternative? Why are kids, why are babes being able to get past, past the cops? Even those kids are getting, even though kids are getting patted down before school, one cop and one security isn't doing anything at schools. And I don't want to be rude, but the cops you guys put are kind of overweight and a little too old to take action quick. When will you guys actually use funds for something important like security? The buses are always without air as well. Do you guys ride around town with windows down at 4:00 in the afternoon? Because I doubt it. So why should our kids? Water fountains don't work as well. Do you guys go eight hours without drinking anything? Some schools don't even do any incentive for kids anymore, and let's not say gym class. They watch Netflix. You guys don't provide our kids with any balls or anything to do at the gym. So what's the point of gym and, what's the point of gym class? I don't send my sons to, my son to school to see fights or see kids smoking. You guys have two securities for a school of more than 500 kids, and I'm wrong, because I just found out there's 1,700 kids in the high school. You guys have to, how does that make sense? There was a time he was getting bullied, and when he defended himself, he got in more trouble than the actual bully. We no longer get paper notices. Everything is to be seen online. Why? There's people who don't have Facebook and miss out on things because you guys don't send anything with, you guys don't send anything out anymore. Pero que nunca faltan los fundraisers and the money for this and that. So where do all the funds go to? My kid, my kindergarten is in a unit. He was in La Union, and the teachers at the unit aren't even certified to work with autistic kids. They would, they wouldn't get out their class all day, wouldn't even go to lunch or attend any incentives that go on in the school either. They have our kids not doing work or even trying to teach them anything. My son would be sleeping all day in the class or on a tablet. When I asked for help, I got an AR meeting, and the substitute principal, Ms. Barrera, told me that if I didn't like it for me to change school, that I could just take him out. How is that the way you help a parent or solve the issue about the teacher not doing their job right? So I took my son out of school. He was home for almost two months before I found a school with teachers that were actually certified. And as well, all of them aren't certified. The kids in the unit shouldn't be getting treated any less. The other day, I attended the Easter Hamaka for special needs kids as well, and a little kid was scared crying on a ride, and the teachers just left him there crying till the ride was over. Even the little boy next to him...
Time's up, ma'am. Any closing comments, please?
Um, any closing comments? Okay, let me see. The kids' special needs shouldn't be getting treated any less than any regular kids. And the teachers, are you guys making sure that they're getting certified? Because you guys have a bunch of kids that aren't certified in school. And then I know Mr. Peña mentioned to me also that, he said, "Have you seen any other districts?" I just saw like last week that Roma actually did something for the special needs kids also. And then the fact that you guys don't allow our kids to even perform in the Christmas parade, like, why? La Joya también, they have a whole basketball team for, for the special needs, and you guys are over here acting like our kids can't do nothing in the classroom?
Ma'am, your closing remarks.
Thank you very much for coming, ma'am. We appreciate it.
Oh, so I don't get any remarks back? Like, you guys don't say nothing about this?
No, no, the, the, the protocol is that you can come make a public comment, but board members are, do not respond to anybody.
Oh, so, so you guys, so then what's the point of this?
It's only to, it's, it's just for, for the board to listen, that's it. So, but thank you very much for coming. We appreciate your...
So do you guys take action, though, or no?
It's not an action item, no, ma'am. It's just public. It's not an action item, it's only public.
I'll be coming every week, like, to say the same thing until I see something done.
You're always, you're always welcome to come, ma'am. We have meetings once a month, so, once a month, ma'am.
Two securities you guys have aren't doing anything.
Again, again, ma'am. Ma'am, we're not... Ma'am, we're, we're, we're invited every month.
We will continue at this time, under the authority of Section Government Code 551.07, 1551.084. We're now going into the closed session, the time?
7:28.
Okay, let's go.
There's no legal requirement.
Okay, I, I guess we'll just keep on going. At this time, now we're re-convening the, the open session. What, what, what is, can I have a motion to approve item A, B, C, D, E, E, G, and H? Item E has been taken out earlier in the thing, so it's a motion to approve item A, B, C, D, F, G, and H. As discussed in executive session.
So move.
Second. Any more discussion? If not, all those in favor, signal by saying aye. Aye, all opposed, same sign. Motion for adjournment.
There's one item, 41?
From D and H.
Okay. One more, I'm sorry. At this time, can, let me get there real quick.
DNH.
We just asked to let the record reflect, there's an abstention from Dr. Barrera on DNH.
Okay. Let, let the record reflect that Ms. Barrera abstaining for which one, Ms. Barrera?
DNH.